George County School Board meeting. And I need a motion to invite David into the meeting.
I would like to make make a motion to invite David Bush virtually into the meeting. He is at home in King George. He's virtual because of an illness.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, motion passes. David is now invited in. Okay, we have Ms. Whitney Kilgore here to present the invocation.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Whitney Kilgore. I have a student here in high school, in King George High School. I am, I have a club at the high school, a mentorship group called the Christ Life Club, and I'm going to lead us in prayer this evening. So let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, for those of you that pray in the name of Jesus, I'll be doing that. So, Father, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for the freedom to come to a place and communicate and just come to some agreements and to play over our schools and to come together collectively to make the best decisions for our children. I pray, God, that you would give us wisdom on the decisions that we make today. I pray that we will be slow to speak and quick to listen, slow to get angry. And I pray that we would all be able to come together and put our, and have the ability to communicate effectively with one another about the things that are brought before us today. We pray for peace here, and we pray that you give us wisdom to make wise decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then a moment of silence.
So we want to have the King George Elementary School Safety Patrol come up front for the pledge.
I'm sorry, guys. You guys are going to start the pledge. Yes, thank you, sorry about that. Wait for everybody to come out, we still got more coming.
That was a lot of you guys.
Is that everybody? All right. Now, when you guys are ready, you can start.
Let's start us off. Pledge allegiance.
To the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys want to stay for a second? The, I almost said Paw Patrol because I have little kids. Safety Patrol. In case any--
Co-captain and the captain over here to the mic.
Thank you.
Yes.
Captain and co-captain over here to the mic.
If you guys want to just kind of spread so we can see them too, kind of like separate.
Step back, thanks.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so this is our safety patrol, and if you guys would like to ask a couple of questions, they're prepared to answer your questions about what they do in the schools.
What are the requirements for you to be a safety patrol? I mean, when I was in elementary school, I always tried and I never made it, so.
Well, you gotta be a good leader, and you gotta be able to step up into, into like big moments when somebody's not like well and they need help.
Say that last part, you should say it one more time, I'm sorry.
When somebody's not like, not doing well or something, you gotta help them and to get to where they're needing, like if they're missing a classroom or they don't know where to go, help them get to where they need to go.
Awesome.
Okay, I have a question. As a person that was on safety patrol when I was in elementary school, I had so many favorite memories, and my favorite was probably like getting out of class early. I'm sorry, Potomac people, but what is your guys' favorite thing that you guys do?
Um, probably being able to check what everybody's doing and like just walking around.
Yeah. Do you have anything recently that has happened? Oh, would you like a chance? Either one of you, anything recent that has happened that you can share a story of how you've helped somebody? Kind of on the spot, so it's okay. Do people fall a lot?
Uh, if they're running, yes.
Yeah, and then, and you gotta tell them to stop running, right? Yeah.
Yes, and I feel like it makes me happy to see people like not getting hurt and stuff because I know it doesn't feel good.
And you're helping with that, yeah. Aye, thank you guys for coming and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, it was really good. So what grade do you have to be in to be a safety patrol? Fifth? And how many people are on your team here? Yeah.
More than this.
So do you take turns with duty stations and things like that?
Not really. Most of the time, they get assigned a certain spot in the school at the start of the year, and if we have to move them, we will and make adjustments.
So did different people have different jobs, or is it just the same job in different stations?
Kind of the same job at different stations, but if you're at a certain post, then you gotta do a different job than at a different post.
Got it. Thank you. So another question really quick. So when you guys have to tell students to stop running and then they don't listen, does that help you listen better to your mom and dad at home or whoever? Is that frustrating though, when they don't listen?
It's a little frustrating.
But for the most part, they do, right? Awesome, thank you, guys. All right. Did I skip something? No.
No, you didn't skip anything, now we have recognition.
Okay.
And that'll be Dr. Burns.
Can I wait for a second?
Dr. Burns will make this presentation.
David, I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot to ask you, I love talking to the kids. Oh, we can see you. Oh, okay. Aw. All right. We're just waiting for everybody to exit, and then we'll move on to the next. Okay, and then next on the agenda is the National Merit Scholarship Program from Dr. Travis Burns. It's good.
Good evening, members of the board. I have the distinct honor and privilege to recognize Marcus Andrews. Why don't you come up here, Marcus? So Marcus has been named a commended student in the 2026 National Merit Scholarship Program. And about 34,000 students are known as commended students throughout the nation, so this is a pretty unique honor. So he's being recognized for his exceptional academic promise. Commended students placed among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2026 competition by taking the 2024 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. So he's one of a few students across the country who did an amazing job, and he's representing King George, so round of applause for Marcus.
Hi, Marcus.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm good, thank you for representing King George so well, and your family too.
Thank you.
Do you want, do you have anything you want to say, or?
Um, I mean, if I may, I want to think of my teachers. I think that's a big thing, my teachers helped me get to this point, and my parents, and my sisters, right, for keeping me on track.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments from the board?
What a great accomplishment, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That is so awesome, I'm so thrilled for you and your future, so it's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Yes, congratulations, Marcus, thank you.
Parents want to take a photo.
Yes.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah.
What an honor. I'm gonna have to stand sideways a little bit. Marcus, you're covering me over here.
All right, thank you.
That's awesome, yes. I don't have my public comment thingy.
You don't want--
I just--
We have one right here.
I didn't want to. Okay, so moving on to the public comment. If you would like to speak during public comment but have not yet signed up, please see the clerk now, which is right here, and you can sign up for that if you're still on a, if you haven't yet. A public comment is an opportunity for community members to share matters they believe deserve the board's attention. It is a time for a one-way communication to the board, not a forum or a dialogue or a debate. All speakers are treated equally and comments should be courteous, respectful, and related to the school division's services or policies. Audience members are expected to maintain proper decorum. Speakers will be recognized by the chair and asked to state their name, their connection to the school division, and their district. Each speaker has up to three minutes to comment, and our first speaker this evening is Ian Scott.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, my name is Ian Scott, I live in King George, and all three of my kids attend King George Elementary. My oldest is in fifth grade and will be moving up to the middle school next year. I'd like to say that I think it is a shame as a society that we feel a need to normalize and encourage participation in sexual thinking and behavior in kids at all, much less at younger and younger ages. Having these conversations with our kids is the sole responsibility of the parent and not the state, not the schools. As parents, we have the God-given right, and yes, we do have rights given to us by our Creator and not the government, to raise our kids as we see fit. Under the misused term tolerance, we are often told to accept others' beliefs and lifestyles without question, but that term usually means tolerating and encouraging any and all intolerance towards Bible-believing Christians. As a Christian, I do not believe it is necessary or appropriate to have any club in our middle school involving accepting lifestyles and behaviors opposed to these beliefs, any more than having a kids' club focused on using drugs or a kids' club mocking other religions. We can't keep moving the line of what's acceptable and normal, and we can't keep pushing them onto our kids at younger and younger ages. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, we have Rachel Scott.
Hi, my name is Rachel Scott. I am in Shiloh District, and I have three kids in King George Elementary School. My oldest is in fifth grade, will be ready to move up to middle school next year. I'm here to comment on the GSA club that was mentioned and discussed at the last meeting. I don't believe that the GSA club is an age-appropriate club for the middle school. It plants a seed in kids' minds that maybe they aren't who they thought they were, or that maybe there's something wrong with them, and needing to explore other sexual orientations, it's just not something that sixth graders, or even all the way up to eighth graders, need to be thinking about. There were some comments last week from some parents about using, having the GSA club would be a safe space for kids who otherwise weren't comfortable sharing at home. For me, that was a very concerning and a red flag. Just because they use the word "safe" doesn't actually mean it really is safe, it just means comfortable. The fact that it sounded like they were trying to hide something from parents or not discuss important topics with parents really means that they're driving a wedge between that relationship, and that absolutely must not happen. Parents need to be involved in all aspects of their child's rearing and especially important topics that the GSA club would probably be discussing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
My name is Julie Gibson, I live in James Monroe District. I do not have any children anymore in the school system, my kids are grown, but I am a taxpayer. I was unable to attend the last board meeting, I was out of town, but I did watch it. So my comment is about the proposed GCA club at the middle school. Last meeting, multiple speakers, including one child, commented over and over, this is not political, but yet the former chair of the King George Democrats called people speaking against this club "bigots." I am against this club, and I can assure you I'm not a bigot, but sixth graders coming out of elementary school, two months into a school year, aren't asking for this club, someone else is steering this ship. There weren't groups of kids speaking out, and I believe this club is supposed to be run by kids with a teacher sponsor. Being gay or straight doesn't need to be celebrated, being gay isn't new or odd, it's just life. Putting labels on kids, boxing them in, will make them exceptions instead of the norm. Letting be kids and figuring it out at this age should be hands-off. Kids don't need to say, "my black friend," "my gay friend," they should say, "my friend." Why do we need to marginalize kids with their sexuality? Doing so smells vaguely familiar to activism to me. No student should know their teacher's political views, period. Their job is to strive for academic excellence, period. It's a parent's job to teach kids to be good people, I trust this board will cite on common sense, leave the politics and the activism out of our schools. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. You have Ms. Whitney Kilgore.
Hello again, everyone. So my name is Whitney Kilgore, again. I'm a Master Sergeant, active duty in the United States Army, been here for 18 years, and I'm actually an equal opportunity advisor. So I am all about people having the right to make their own decisions, being treated fairly and things like that. Also, inside the school, I host the Christ Life Club, which is, if it was up a debate about taking that away, just because someone didn't agree with it, I wouldn't agree with that. I think, I would like to start with saying this, as an equal opportunity leader in the Army, I spent a lot of time advocating for fair treatment of all people. While God is clear about things like gender and sexual orientation, I do believe He gives us the free will to choose. The question today is more about when should that freedom to choose be allowed within our school system? I think as parents and leaders of the school, we have the response to make, we have the responsibility to make wise decisions about when we allow that to take place officially in our schools. I think middle school is too young for anyone to make that type of decision. Schools should not be allowed to encourage these decisions without a parent knowing what is being taught or encouraged. For example, if a teacher, if a parent wanted to know what was being taught at a Christ Life Club meeting, they could, they could come and they could find out, they could even sit on one if they wanted to, it's not anything that we're trying to hide. I think we should not be allowed in middle school without parents being fully aware of what's being encouraged and instilled. This would not be a safe space, I repeat, this would not be a safe space, but a dangerous place. Another approach could be the school hosting some type of meeting after school where you allow these students to come, and they have someone that deals with these types of thoughts and behaviors, and they're able to talk about it collectively in a group where you could have eyes on and be able to understand how people are feeling and hear as a parent what's being told to their children. I think that would be a better approach than putting a group of teen, pre-teens into a room and expecting them to make good decisions about their sexuality and their gender and things like that. I think as adults, we wouldn't allow, I don't encourage my son to go and get advice from his, if he was getting advice from his 12-year-old best friend, just because he made a few good points, and I don't think that any parent would appreciate them getting advice about their sexual orientation and about maybe some feelings that they're a little bit confused about or 100% certain about at a time as critical in that stage of development. So as a parent, I am against this club, I don't think it should be allowed to be started just for the simple fact of where they are in their, in their development and the way that it's being presented as a safe space when it's really, when I don't believe as a parent, it sounds very safe to me. So I think it should not be allowed, and that's my stance, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. And then I have Carrie Weaver.
My name is Carrie Weaver, I'm a taxpayer, I don't have any children in the school system, but I feel it is my duty to make comments, I wasn't here for the previous meeting, to hear exactly what went on, but I feel that if it's during school time, why isn't it required of a parent to okay it? They can't give a Tylenol to a child without parent's approval, and you're going to allow a club like this when they, they shouldn't be making up decisions, and it's not a teacher's responsibility, it's the family, it's the church's responsibility to be doing this, not the school system. And I find it as a taxpayer, a waste of money, and certainly wrong. I would think that the school board needs to consider these thoughts and come to a decision, not political, not because it's right, but because it's going to represent the people of King George County, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Superintendent report?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you all again for coming out tonight to speak at public comment. I think we've had a very good, open and honest and collegial discourse in the last couple of weeks on this particular topic. It's refreshing, honestly, to see everyone in our community come out and be so involved and engaged and invested in our schools. Later this evening, we're going to continue to talk about this in relation to policy. I can tell you, there's been no decision that has been made, there has been a lot of conversation, there has been a lot of research from our board members, from myself, we've explored what other schools are doing, we've taken a look at policy and legal precedents, and we've heard you all loud and clear. One of the things that we kind of hope to get accomplished tonight, you'll see in our agenda moving forward, is a more formal process for erecting clubs, both at our, at our middle school level and our high school level. I think that alone would provide some filters in place to really vet these type of things before they get, you know, on Facebook and public and everything else, providing our principals, our school staff, myself, and our school board an opportunity to really slow down and make these decisions very consciously. I can tell you, I don't want to speak for our board members, but the, the application for the GSA club right now has not been acted on, and, and there are some things in it, most certainly, that when you see the application, or excuse me, the regulation that we would approve tonight, would raise some red flags for us. So we hope to move forward with the process of formalizing clubs, both at our, at our middle school and high school, and giving us the vehicle and the avenue we need to make informed decisions about, you know, not only our high school students, but students that are 10, 11, and 12 years old. So, thank you, Madam Chair, and I can stop there for now, thank you.
Great, do we have any board comments? I just want to say something. One thing that we all can--
One thing that we all can agree on is something, one of the big changes we made was parental involvement, it's super important to us, and that's one of the changes that we made in clubs going forward, so, is making sure that parents are involved. And that's it.
So any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, so this evening when we do review policies, there is a policy that I would like to take out, we do need, we have a little bit more work to do, I'm pulling it up right now, I'm sorry, I should have had it pulled up, do you have it pulled up? I'd like to remove JHCDB and JHCDB-F. This is just a revision to the forms that we've been doing in the last few weeks. It has to do with the number of AEDs that we have at our school buildings. We'd like to update this policy before we bring it back before you to admit the forms, but we'd like to make sure it's in better form before we bring it to you, so if we could admit that tonight, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and we'll do that when that part comes on.
Okay. Well, you can, you can change the agenda, make a motion to change the agenda.
Make a motion to change the agenda.
I make a motion that we change the agenda.
Second. Do we have to state what we're changing?
Just as presented, you can say.
As presented.
Second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, motion--
Aye.
David, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Goodness gracious. Okay, oh, we have any presentations, technology advisory committee annual report by Ms. Hillary
Good evening, thanks for having me tonight. On behalf of the Technology Advisory Committee, tonight we provide a Division Technology update and to give you some updates on where we are with the Technology Department, where we're headed, and some of our highlights and challenges. So the purpose of tonight is to just share, sorry, Ms. Higgins, can you back one? That was my fault. It's my favorite time of year when I have to stand at this podium. The purpose of tonight's update is to share some of our current priorities and progress and reflect on our highlights and challenges, as well as discuss some of our next steps and future focus areas. As you all know, advisory committees usually are made up with several different stakeholders and groups of people. We have a really well-rounded committee this year, we just met on the 18th of September and had, I think, 22 members attend, and it was great, we had really great conversation, and a lot of good things came from that. So we meet roughly four to five times per year, and I feel it's very productive for the Division, and it's really productive for myself and the department to get a feel for what's going on out there, especially when we have parents and community members sharing their voice. So this is a chaotic slide, and it's kind of meant to be a chaotic slide. Last year, we had some students fill out a form, what three words come to mind when you think about technology, right? And the most popular words that came through the form, when you create a word cloud like this, this is what our kids are usually thinking about when they hear the word "technology." And not everything up there is positive, you see things like annoying and blocked, right? So it's a really good overview of how our kids feel about technology. Obviously, computer is helpful, the phone is always going to come up when a kid talks about technology. But also, in our committee meetings, it can get a little chaotic too, because it's such a broad, it's such a broad area and a broad topic. So I thought this really exemplified, you know, there are so many things that we touch in a day that have to do with technology, and especially thinking from a student's perspective. I just thought that was kind of cool, and we handed that out last year to our last, at our last meeting, everybody got like a cardstock poster of that to take home. So this chart comes straight out of our technology plan, our five-year plan. Currently, the tech plan is from 2023 to '28, so we're about halfway through our five-year plan. We use this to make sure that we're staying on target with our refresh update and our refresh schedule. Certainly with technology, you don't want any two projects to happen within the same year for budgeting purposes. Some of these are handled through federal grants and state grants, but we're in a really good place right now, you can notice that your switches and access points were replaced last year, that's a really huge project, so we're happy to have that behind us. Something big that's coming up next year, our high school teachers will receive new laptops, because they were the first folks to get them about four years ago, so we're going to try to get five years out of those laptops and start a refresh. Chromebooks is ongoing, every year we are having to refresh those, but it gives you an idea of, these are the big-ticket items that we really have to focus on to stay on target. This slide's purpose really is to just show you, you know, inside the day-to-day of technology, no day looks the same. If you look at the two pie graphs, you know, we could go through a two-week period where building security is our top priority, and then maybe that calms down and things are performing the way that we need them to, and Chromebook Management, you know, steps up, or something goes wrong and it takes three of us away from the department and away from our time to, to handle those. our time to handle those. So it just goes to show you that we have a lot of different categories that we cover, and, you know, every season is different. Summer always is going to look different than fall and winter. We're very busy right before our students come back to school. But, you know, we handle a lot of things, and it's kind of fun to be on the department where every day, you just don't know what's going to happen, right? So some of our highlights, as everybody knows, we put into place the weapons detection systems. You have 15 units across the school division, dedicated support to strengthen the safe learning environment. You know, not only was this a technology highlight, but I think bringing our folks together, we had central office staff, we had school board members pushing into our buildings for those first two to four weeks. So it was really cool to see us all come together and get to know each other. You know, we're getting a chance to learn our teachers and to talk to them and get to know them, so it almost became a team-building activity for us and for our employees, and it was, it was really refreshing, I think, and I, you know, I speak on behalf of school board employees, to have school board members standing alongside of us, going through the issues and working those things out. And I think, you know, when you look at us now, we're in a really good place with that, and they know that we're always still here if they need us out in those buildings. Enhanced wireless connectivity, you know, we're, we're still working through some bugs, but overall, we really have improved our wireless connectivity, and, you know, something to speak to testing as it's so big in our division with state testing, that we now have the infrastructure to support, you know, up to 2,000 kids testing in one day, and we couldn't have said that three and four years ago. So that's a really big deal. You know, Dr. Nice can test all 1,000 kids in one day, as long as everything's, you know, going according to plan. Student devices, this is always a highlight for us. We always work really hard to make sure that on the first day of school, our kids are distributed with Chromebooks. So we pretty much gave out 2,500 devices within three business days this fall, and that's a really huge undertaking, and the fact that we usually pull through and we make it happen is certainly a highlight. And then interactive panels, you know, these are like, they're much like your smartboard, but we don't use that model. We use a different model. Currently, every secondary, almost every secondary math teacher does have a panel in their classroom, because we partnered with Instruction, and we wanted to support the new math curriculum that you just saw come through. So I think we're really pleased at Secondary to know that our math teachers are equipped with what they need digitally to help with that curriculum, as well as we have those in our K-5 classrooms. Three years ago, we had less than five panels, and right now, we have somewhere in the 80s, about 84 panels. So that's, that's really big. And then just a couple quotes from our teachers at the advisory meeting last month. Certainly, along with highlights come our challenges. As everybody knows, this is no surprise. Rising technology costs is certainly a fear. Device repair and replacements for one-to-one can get really hairy for us, because we don't always know how to plan for, for what our device damages are going to be year to year. Preparing for the future and adapting to emerging technologies such as AI in safe and responsible ways, and planning for long-term growth and sustainability. Network security is also a big deal. Ransomware, phishing attacks, some of you noticed, we went through that Friday afternoon and had a compromised email address, and it's just, it's going to happen, and we just have to know how to respond to that as quickly as we can. Protecting student and staff data requires, obviously, ongoing investment in tools and training. And then, of course, instructional alignment. You know, we want to make sure the technology supports the teaching rather than distracts from it, so we're always looking to maintain that balance. And then, you know, of course, offering professional development opportunities and getting in there and finding time throughout the year to do that from the Technology Department. So I spoke last year a little bit about generative AI and how a number of us had gone to some trainings on how to push this in and how to support our teachers and our students. Over the last week and a half, we have visited with the middle school and the high school department chairs to talk about, how can we support you from the instructional department and the technology department? You know, is there something a teacher can do when they're assigning an assignment and specify, do I, are you going to use AI for this, or are you not? Because if we don't specify that and our kids use AI, are they really cheating? Is it really plagiarism until we say, you may not use AI for this assignment, or you can blend your AI in this assignment? So what that tiered approach is, is it's kind of, and it could almost be made into a poster for a teacher when they're developing a rubric, here's your guidance when you assign this assignment, and be specific and be clear with the kiddos. There's some PD that we've pushed out, the Generative AI for Education, that is through our Google Workspace. It's roughly a two-hour professional development, and it's a really good overview for educators. We're pushing that out through our weekly memos to our staff. And then just, you know, a statistic there, seven out of 10 of these students have used at least one type of GenAI, and that's from, GenAI, and that's from 2024. And then, of course, our focus areas, right? What are we really spending our time on over this next year? Currently, we are looking at implementing a new asset management and work order system to streamline our inventory. Currently, we're running off spreadsheets, and we're doing some man-made things, and we're getting to, we have too much equipment to be able to do that, so we have invested in an asset management system that we're just getting ready to put into place and do some piloting with one of our schools. Building-level presence, you know, technology is, we're often behind the scenes, and that's good, but we also need our teachers to know that our technicians are out there, and they're visible, and they're in the hallways, and that they're welcoming. So that's a really big deal to me. Digital wellness and balance, I say this every year, providing a balance for our students so we're not looking at a device all day, but that we're using it appropriately, and just helping with the instruction department to maintain that balance. And then certainly, your artificial intelligence, it's not going away, it's only getting bigger. So being able to support them. And our strategic plan, technology is really woven into Goal Two of the strategic plan, which is focused around instruction, so we're kind of embedded with them. But two of the big things that have come along is supporting the implementation of computer science and digital learning integration standards, promoting digital citizenship curriculum, you know, and just, again, trying to provide as much professional development as we can, and certainly on our side, staying up to date with our technology plan. Every year, we try to update that to keep it on track and be ready for that refresh in 2028, when we will build another five-year technology plan. So that is all I have for you this evening. Thank you for having me. Dr. Nice is here, and he is also a member of the committee, and Ms. Hoover is our school board representative, so we thank her for her time.
Okay. Can we ask if anybody has any questions for you? Mr. Bush? Give him a minute, he's on mute.
No, I know that, I'm okay now. Yes, I know that Ms. Haff is doing a great job, and I thank you for all the effort and work that you put in a few, about past couple months, and I just appreciate your interest and thank you for everything that you've done, especially, this is a great-looking plan.
Yes, thank you. And Ms. Haff is wonderful and very helpful, and we appreciate you so much. I will also say those comments that were just made were true, for sure. I did have a question, though. On your presentation, you were saying that there's an increase in phishing for the schools, and I, I'm just curious if you, your opinion on it, like, why would they be phishing schools?
So I had a conversation with our technician this afternoon, and he's like, this isn't phishing, it's wailing. And I was like, here's the thing, and we're going to talk about this, Dr. Boyd doesn't know it yet, but it's on tomorrow's agenda with supervisors. The teachers that they're hitting and the employees that they're hitting do not have two-factor authentication on their emails, so it makes them a little bit more vulnerable to this. And it's not necessarily just in schools. Think about your personal accounts, right? You never want to leave your email wide open overnight, because there's more of a chance of someone getting into that. I think what happened this last time and what's happening is teachers do see things that are like, free download here, and they click on it, and it's an, it's an executable file, and that usually is what creates that vulnerability. I can't get into the weeds with you about the whole backend thing. I can certainly find out more from my network engineer, but once that does happen and once that email is compromised, and someone is now in that person's email, they have access to all their contacts, whether they're school email accounts or their personal email accounts, and this is why we saw like 400 emails going out to all these people, and we were trying to redact that. I think, and the other big one is administrators, right? Your superintendents, your administrators, your central office staff, they like to get in there, because we have more contacts, we have more availability to send staff emails. And when you think about your teachers, if they see an email from Dr. Boyd, they're right away like, hey, send me your cell phone number, you know, I want to help you. A teacher's going to respond to that, because, oh, that's, that's Dr. Boyd, right? So a lot of us get targeted more so when you're in an administrative role.
Yeah. Thank you. Does that help?
Yeah. We do have the, like, the tests that we send out emails that will see if we can, can you describe that better than I?
Yep. So we are part of a staff awareness training software, that basically, every so often, it'll go out in batches to our staff members, and it'll be a phishing email, but it'll be a safe email, because it's from us, right? And we test our teachers to see if they're actually going to take it, hook, line, and sinker, right? So if a teacher goes for that email, and it says, King George County Schools has sent you a Visa gift card, click here to get your award, and they click that button, they'll see a little icon that says, you've just been phished, you shouldn't have clicked on this, and then it does kind of make them do like a two-minute video sometimes in a module, they have to answer a question and move on. So we're doing what we can to, to help our teachers understand, not to trust everything that comes in through an email. Today, everybody's going, Ms. Haff, is this legitimate? Is this a legit email? Because they're nervous now, especially those that were affected on Friday, so they're really, it's in their forefront, which is good. You know, we want them to be a little nervous about clicking on these things.
Yeah, and they're getting better, too, at phishing.
Yep.
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 Yeah.
Ms. Haff, this is David, Mr. Bush, but our mission does the same thing, and only when we get caught, it's a two-hour training you got to go through, and after that happens about three times, boy, you get better and better at it.
Yeah, I don't think our staff would love two hours, so we're going to stick to three minutes.
Frank?
Ms. Haff, I just want to thank you for all you do. I was in the school world a couple of times last week after hours, and I still saw you running down the halls. So I know, we all know the work that you put in and the things that you do. You mentioned preparing for the future, and one of the things that we have to prepare for is AI, which I don't know about, I mean, you're the expert in it, but I think it's probably one of the scariest things that's going to come into society in the near future, and it's going to change a lot.
It is. And honestly, we're not the experts. These guys are the experts, right? These students know long before we know, they're on to the next, we're still on ChatGPT, right? Helping us write an email. There's 14 new AI sites out there right now that we don't even know about, but I can guarantee you our kiddos do, so.
I should tell my students all the time, if it doesn't have a trigger, I can't use it, so I sure can't use technology.
Something funny, you know, our internet at home, we just got like a year ago in King George, so it feels like a totally different life. But one of the words that popped out to me about was reliable, it was so tiny, because it's gotten a lot better as far as even my home, but even here, I take night classes at the high school, and it's better. Yeah, I noticed it was a lot better. So thank you for all your hard work. Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I could just take a minute with this audience and this opportunity, I do want to thank Ms. Haff for all that she does with all of those things that were challenges and accomplishments and everything that she does on a daily basis. When we rolled out this weapon detection system, and as far as implementation, she took it and ran with it and really provided an intricate role in making sure that that got done on time. So I just want to say thank you for that, because it really meant a lot to me and I think all of us. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. State accountability and accreditation by Ms. Sandra Duff.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present this data to you. This data is based on preliminary reports still. I was hopeful that I was going to be able to give you official state numbers. They are now telling me later this week. So we are still working off of preliminary data, but I will keep you in the loop as stuff changes and more information comes out. There are going to be potentially some small changes that come when the official data is announced, but this data has been, is, the information that I presented at Convocation was very preliminary. This has a little bit more meat behind it. We know a lot of that data. So the next slide. Higgins, thank you. The accountability framework is completely different than the information that I presented to you guys last year. This changed at a state level. I went to all the schools last spring and presented to administration and teachers what the new framework was going to look like. It is slightly different at an elementary versus a secondary level, but our schools will be categorized by one of the four labels in the framework as distinguished, on track, off track, and needs intensive support, and then it's going to be on a 100-point scale. So 90 and above would be a distinguished school, 80 to 89 would be on track, 65 to 79 would be off track, and then below 65 would be intensive support. Those 100 points are gained by the three categories you see on the left of the side. So mastery, growth, and readiness are the categories for the elementary schools and the middle school. The high school does not have growth, but that is where the graduation rate goes. Readiness at the elementary schools is just chronic absenteeism right now. The middle school does add another category of advanced coursework, so right now, that's our math kiddos that are taking high school-level courses and above in middle school, and then the high school does add a six-year graduation rate and the three E readiness, which is all of the CTE certifications and the workplace readiness that we do. The state is still producing an annual pass rate, so they're still producing the subgroups that I presented to you guys last year, but they are not a part of this accountability framework. It aligns to the federal accountability. This is just state. So if you look at this first chart, this is King George Elementary School's data. You can see right now, it is sitting at a 79.75, which is .25 off of being on track. They do not round, so they round to the nearest 10th, so it's 79.8. We are, this is data that is sitting right on the line. It could, it could tip over to an on-track school, we just don't know what that final data will be this week. But next to the mastery, growth, and readiness in this framework, you can see that 55% of the data comes from mastery, 35 from growth, and 10% from readiness. The reading performance is, points earned is the numerator, the denominator would be students, and then it works its way across to how many points would add up. So those four mastery categories, only three of them count into the matrix, because the EL progress is only 13 students, it has to be 15 in order to count in the data. So the three math, reading, and science performance total up to that 49.55 out of 55 total points. Growth is measured for fourth and fifth graders at an elementary school, so it's compared to how they did the year before, did they make growth in their SOL? And that growth comes from whether they passed or failed the year before. It is just growth from year to year. The readiness is chronic absenteeism, so that shows that 21.91% of King George Elementary School students were considered chronically absent. It is 7.8 total out of the 10, so that totals up to that 79.75. The next chart is the same information, it's just Potomac Elementary. Again, their EL denominator is not 15, so their mastery category comes from reading, math, and science. They earned 51 out of the 55 points in mastery. Growth, because the EL is at zero, growth is the 35% here, and then readiness is the 10%, totaling up to that 86.3. Sealston Elementary is different, because their EL population is over the 15, so that 10% gets attached to mastery and becomes 65% of the mastery numbers. Growth goes to its 25, and readiness stays at 10. The EL population progress is K, not K, it's first grade through fifth grade, because students have to be in their, it's the WEDA test, access test that they do, and they have to have taken the test twice in order to measure their progress, so kindergartners don't count in that, but it is going to be first, second, and third, third and fourth and fifth grade at an elementary school. The next one is the middle school. The middle school's mastery is a little bit different. Their total is 60. Their EL progress, they did have 21 students, so that counts as their 10%. Growth is only 20 for a middle school-level matrix, and then the readiness is 20, because chronic absenteeism is 10%, and then the advanced coursework is another 10%. If you look at the numbers here, they are, the points earned is based off of the student performance in reading for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Denominator is the next student column, and then you get the percentage of points possible and the index value, which totals up to the 49.36 out of 60 possible points in mastery. Their growth is just for reading and math, it is all three grade levels. It is all three grade levels that can get growth. It just has to be that the student was a Virginia student who took the test the year before. And their readiness is a little bit higher than the elementary schools because of that advanced coursework. But that is 108 students based off of their seventh grade SOL were eligible to do advanced coursework in eighth grade in in seventh and eighth grade, and all 108 were scheduled advanced. So we got 100% of that category, which brings them to an 81.58. The high schools is a little bit different looking in that first you have to realize that this is not the whole high school. This is just our senior class last year. So they do not do every test in the in the school each year. They do cohort data. So this is based off of our graduating class of cohort 2025. Mastery and graduation and readiness are not whole numbers because our EL population was not at 15. So that becomes 0% and they distribute the 10% that would have been in EL progress equally to all three of the other remaining categories. Whereas in the elementary and the middle school, they just put it with growth. So that's why those numbers are a little off. The high school is coming out as a 97.41, which is a distinguished number. If you look at the chart closely, you can see reading performance. We had so many students at that graduated last year that scored an advanced pass that we actually got over 100% on that category. And then the three E readiness is again, so many students got above the the norm, the standard one point. They got a 1.25, so that's over 100%. So those two categories carried this to the high school coming out as a distinguished school. I will take the opportunity to point out that it does hide other things that we should be concentrating on. The chronic absenteeism numbers on all five charts are are we we are chronic absenteeism increased from last year to this year. So we are, that is something that we need to focus on. It does get hidden by the other wonderful accomplishments in each school. But it is definitely something that we should focus on and look at. And then our EL population is constantly rising and that is going to, it affected Sealston in the middle school this year. King George L is very close to having their EL population be above that 15 where they would have that 10% shifted there as well. The next chart is, as Dr. Wright says, it's his favorite one to look at. It is our federal pass rates. So these are not the polished numbers. These are just straight number of students who passed divided by the number of students who took the test. And these numbers are, the state is across the bottom and King George is across the top. And then our, the rest of our regional schools that we usually compare ourselves to or through throughout the rest of that chart. I checked the math on this a million times because King George hit the state average in all four subject areas and mathematically that didn't sit well with me. So I double checked this and we we definitely are sitting right on the state average in all four categories. We did not do that last year. We were one or two points below in math and I think three points below in science. So those are gains that we made from last year. And the final slide that I have for you doesn't really have a whole, it's not about our accountability or accreditation. It's about what's coming in the future. The state is making constant progress and changes. And at the September board meeting, they approved new cut scores for reading and math. So we have been sitting at for years now, a 400 is a passing on an SOL, a 500 is an advanced pass, a 600 is a perfect score. They, with the new standards, they did they did a standard setting committee this summer and they have reworked those numbers where and it was approved at the September board meeting that these would be the new cut scores. So a third grader, the 400 is no longer a passing score. It will be a 444 for the reading SOL. This is something that we know that is coming. We don't know what it's going to look like, though. Their October board meeting is when they're going to decide. They've been getting stakeholder opinions across the state to figure out how to implement this. Do we phase it in in three years, four years, five years? Do we set it up so that students kind of phase in at the high school level? They want to make sure that they protect the class of 2026, that this isn't a huge change for them in the the final hours of their senior year that they're going to have to make that change. So there's a lot more information still to come on that as the board, the Virginia Board of Education makes those decisions in their October and probably November meetings. But I have a feeling that we have a lot more updates coming from them with that. We'll get state information later this week that we'll be able to update with you guys hopefully at the next meeting and give you more concrete answers. These numbers are more firm than than I've given in the past, but they are still small changes are possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Duff. Do we have any board comments, Mr. Bush?
No, thank you. Your your report was very thorough and I appreciate it a lot. And I know that's a lot of data to gather and to report on. Just your opinion, we definitely made some small improvements over last year. Do you see that continuing or what are your big concerns for the future? Obviously absenteeism is a huge one, but areas do you that we're concerned with or that you see we're going to be improving on?
I think that we, the chronic absenteeism is definitely something that we need to work on as a division. I think focusing on our EL population that is rising, we're going to have to pay attention to that. We also made gains, if you look at the detail of the charts, we definitely made more gains across the division in math than we did in reading. I think that the the Virginia Literacy Act and the new plans that everyone's doing, elementary schools did plans last year. This year it's per the state, it's elementary and middle. I think it's going to take us time, but we'll see gains from that as well as teachers do all those modules and learn how to prepare our students for tests that are more difficult because the standards have changed and they're expecting kids to analyze on a different level. And I think there's a learning curve there for the students and the teachers. And we are, we are making good progress towards it, but it's going to take the time to get there.
Good. Thank you.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duff, for this information. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Just because I don't, I don't see the historic data and I don't know if you, do you have the historic data that you?
Absolutely. I can share last year's presentation with you and anything else that would help you kind of fill the gap for the last year or two.
Okay.
I would say too that this is the first rendition for this accountability system and this data. So we can give last year's presentation and cut scores and things of that nature. But that's a point I did want to make is that this is an entirely new accountability system that the state is pushing out along with cut scores and a number of other changes. Ms. Duff and I have set in a lot of professional development from the state level. There's a lot of changes going on and a lot of thing, a lot of moving parts right now. So we can tie historical data to those cut scores, right? And and chronic absenteeism and things of that nature, but there's also a lot of new.
And we can still look at the subgroup data from a federal level. They break down, they have a three year pattern that they do. They they report the last three years of that. So that information would be available, but it's definitely. I spent time last spring educating our staff on the new accountability, but our our parents are going to need it now too. Our community is going to need it because it's framing the same data in a different way.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that. So can you, are you able to say without having the data here, are we up or down at these schools? Are you able to?
It's it's different for every school. I can say that our growth is is strong at Potomac and the middle school. There was definitely growth there. Sealston and King George L made growth. King George Elementary's growth last year was stronger than it was this year. So growth becomes difficult if you're getting more and more students to pass and they keep growing. It's it's hard to keep that pace up, if you will. So I think that that is a factor in King George Elementary's. But I think that one thing to definitely be proud of and and to say that we are up is that traditionally, as an educator throughout my entire career, when you put new standards and a new test in place, like reading and math, you always see a dip in the data because the teachers are learning new curriculum and so are the students. And we didn't dip this year. The work that we did last year, we didn't see a dip that other divisions did.
She's not done yet.
This is my ignorance, but what is three E readiness?
So three E readiness is the part of the accountability that takes into account our enrollment, enlistment and employment. So the enrollment numbers are based off of, we get the the division gets points and different different bonuses for students who take AP courses, students who take dual enrollment courses. Enlistment is going to be based off of the ASVAB test, which students can choose to take. That is our military aptitude test. And then the, what am I missing? Employment is all of our CTE certification classes. So it is students who took, whether it is workplace readiness or it is a the certifications that they take that are associated with those CTE courses. Depending on how many students take an exam, we get credit and then depending on how they do. So they fall into four categories where they are, I hate to use the word worth, but the points that these students give us either are 1.25 into the matrix, 1.75 or 0.25. And that's why in the reading and in the three E readiness, the high school scored so well because so many students were worth that 1.25 that it took us over 100%.
Okay. And then just one more question on your, on the cut score slide. So are these, this is the proposal for the cut scores or this is what they are now?
They were approved at the September board meeting.
So is the passing is proficient? Is that where you pass?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, so we had a meeting today, Sandra and I, a virtual meeting. Those cut scores are passed. Right now they're playing with this idea of an approaching category as well, which is not on here, which will be a temporary fix and it'll be a score lesser than proficient, which will also count as passed. What they haven't decided yet is how long they want this implementation period to to last. They're throwing around three, four, five years. So and and also holding, as I think Sandra pointed out, holding certain classes harmless from these changes. We certainly wouldn't want our seniors right now who are accustomed to getting a 400 on an SOL to all of a sudden have to have a, you know, 443 to pass. There's a lot of superintendents and a lot of school divisions right now wrestling with with what this means. And there's a lot that's still left to be explained from the state level.
Just well, thank you for all you do. I mean, I was, saw you for years around the high school, making sure all the kids got, you know, everything passed. And last year I saw Dr. Trusslow doing the same thing. And
Yes.
I saw the tears in her eyes when two kids weren't going to walk across the stage last year. And but the high school is that distinguished because of the of the the passion that you two have for what you do and for our young students. Now, seeing that and Dr. Wood and I have talked about this quite a bit. The absenteeism rate, I mean, we had the all in, is that still working? I I mean, I even went around to a couple of houses visiting. Is that still, is it, did it work at all? And then what are the next, and maybe Dr. Boyd can answer this. What are the next approaches approaches to our absentee rate? I mean, we can change the calendar and do things like this, but I mean, there's got to be, we've got to do something there to get these kids in the classroom.
All in definitely allowed us to, so all in, one of the components of it allowed us to put record flex hours for students. So students who at an elementary level and a middle school level participated in after school tutoring or at the high school level went to the Saturday sessions that they had roughly what, five or six in the spring, I think. Those students were allowed to earn hours back, basically, that would kind of help with their absenteeism. So I think for certain students, if you if you can get students to commit to after school or a Saturday, it definitely helped them across the board. I I don't know that I can say that all in has done a huge amount of things for us because it has, our chronic absenteeism is still a problem at all five schools. I can tell you that we have worked with technology and Dr. Wright has looked at reporting in Power School that gives us a clearer picture partway through the year that allows us to monitor those kids starting right now. We've been in school nine weeks, who's chronically absent? Who's who's already on track to keep that up for the end of the year? And I think my opinion is the answer is partially individualized. You have to meet with those kids, you have to talk to those families. I pulled data for King George Elementary just today, asking, they wanted to know out of the 131 kids that were chronically absent for them last year, what grade levels were they in? Who were those students? And and just trying to see patterns of families or if it's one grade level more than another. And I think that that has to happen on a regular basis in all the schools. And that's just part of it because that's the individual side of it. But the other side of it is making school engaging and fun in a place the kids want to be. And our teachers are constantly trying to do that for them.
I think that's the key if we can, you know, get the principals and teachers to to work on that. However, Jeff Smith is the only person we have that checks on all of this. And with the number of kids that we have that are out there, maybe we need to give him some help.
We can add that to the budget when we, that'll be real soon here.
And I can tell you as the human at the high school who used to try and pull the data, Power School didn't really help us do it very much. And we now have new, better real time reports that are going to show us a report almost out of click of a button versus a massive amount of analysis. And at the high school level where that is converting from meeting attendance to day attendance, that will be a very useful report for that administrative team and counseling and all, everyone who would be pitching into that process.
Again, thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I I'm so blessed to have Ms. Duff in the position that she's in. There's a lot of changes right now on the state level and and to be able to interpret this data and really dig it down to the roots of it and and really do the state math before the state even does the math and give us this type of analysis. That's amazing. And and for Ms. Duff to be able to do that for us and show us where we are and where our trajectory is is, I I truly appreciate it. And it's a wonderful accomplishment and I thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to say, like, there's a reason you're in this position because you're just, it's it's here and you're just saying it. And I mean, I can tell you're really good at what you do, so.
Makes me nervous because I want to be able to explain it. I live and breathe it and I want to make sure that other people understand it as well.
You're a good speaker as well.
Thank you.
You're doing both, a good job at both. But I wanted to say something that showed on the graphs, reports there was not only did we, are we showing state average, but we're also showing, we're leading the entire region in most of it and a couple of them.
We are.
There's four, but we're.
There's one number on the chart higher than us and it is Westmoreland's math. And they're doing some very out of the box things. We've already discussed, we reached out to talk to them about their plan. So but across the region, we're definitely strong.
And the other thing was, is like, the the teachers have been, we have, the state has kind of taken away their individuality, the ability to have all this fun stuff in the schools. So it's very challenging for them to get all this done and still make it fun.
It is.
Yes.
Absolutely. And with the new math and reading curriculum happening in the same year, they're they're still struggling with that process and 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 learning how to get the kids where they need to be while having fun doing it.
Without, you don't have to answer it, but if if you know of anything that you can send our way that maybe we could cut out? I know you guys work on it, but I don't get to hear all that, you know? Please send it our way because that is, that is a goal of ours as a board is to like get the teachers to have the ability to make class fun again.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
And thank you. Okay, now we are moving on to our student representatives. Is it Zach? Logan, sorry, Logan.
He's up first for the middle school.
Hi, Logan. This is his first time on the, I believe, at the board, being the student rep, and he's from the middle school.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Logan Samuel. And I'm one of the student reps, obviously, at King George Middle School. And I'd like to just share a few things going on. So they have this cutest pets, oh, cutest pets of fall contest. And you're supposed to submit like a photo of your pet at in a fall themed photo. Like pumpkins or Halloween cider, Thanksgiving. And it's kind of cool, I guess. But
Did you guys send them in already? Submit them?
I don't exactly know when they're due, but I think it's sometime around October.
Okay.
Sometime around.
Is there a pricey one?
I think it's like a gift card or something, right?
Okay.
Something like that. Another thing is that the quarter, quarter one's ending on Friday. And I mean, my grades are pretty good, but I know some people are not doing well, but I'm really excited that we're finally done with quarter one. I think they have the assembly sometime, I think next week. Maybe on Tuesday, Wednesday, like those kind of things.
Thank you. This is Brooke.
Good evening. I'm Brooke Hayden. I'm one of the student representatives for the high school. And I'd like to share a few updates about our school. First of all, our falls, our fall sports are in full spring. are in full spring, swing and cross country will be celebrating their senior night this Wednesday to recognize the senior runners. Our field hockey team has also been very active, not only competing hard this season, but raising over $4,000 to improve their program. They recently won against a game up from, at Cortland High School, marking the first sign that this has happened in over a decade. A new addition to the high school is the girls wrestling team, making King George one of the first schools in the battlefield district to offer the program. And they have already started conditioning. The King George Royal Regiment competed over the weekend in Maryland and won first place in the four A division. Congratulations to the members and their hard work. We have, we have experienced some challenges during dismissal from the student's point of view. Car riders would like to leave about five minutes before the 2:15 bell to house, to help reduce congestion in the parking lot and bus loop. We know that it would take out hours of cour- throughout the whole school year, but it is something that we truly think would be beneficial. Currently, students are often having to wait for the bus, buses to load, which delays their exit until around 2:30 or 2:45. This not only makes it difficult for students to get to their cars quickly, but also to continue to, this also continues to the significant traffic on the streets. On the club side, our Chick-fil-A Leadership Academy is planning on an exciting outreach program. Members will be visiting all three elementary schools on October the 19th to hand out books and encourage, encourage reading. Finally, our DECA program will be hosting its initiation ceremony this Wednesday at 10 a.m. And Ms. Charles specifically asked me to invite you guys to it. And multiple clubs at, at the high school, including DECA, National Honor Society and YSHI are setting up stands at the King George Fall Festival this Saturday to give students opportunities to volunteer in the community. And King George High School has also launched the Project Kind through Character Strong programs, which is a mandated character educated initiative. And students will participate in 10 sessions throughout the school year. This week, our counseling team is coordinating a series of fun and meaningful activities during all lunch periods to promote kindness, connection and awareness around bullying prevention. And Red Ribbon Week will happen from October 27th to the 31st with the theme, life is a puzzle, solve it drug free. This week is dedicated to aware, to raise awareness about the dangers of drug use and encourage students to commit to a drug free lifestyle. And the school counselors will also be hosting a spirit week during that. And that's all that I have and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooke. Uh, any, where are we at? Would any of the board like to comment? Or is that later? Let me see. Okay. Uh, consent agenda. Meeting minutes, September 22nd, 2025 disciplinary hearing. And then, uh, that was for September 22nd and then the regular meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the September 22, 2025 disciplinary hearing and September 22, regular meeting as presented.
Second.
Just any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye. Thank you, David. Uh, B is, we're going to talk about the donation, um, from Bobby McLaff.
Yes, Madam Chair. So in, in this, uh, since our last meeting, we did receive a donation from Four Elements Electric. This is in relation to our electrical apprenticeship program and the amount of $15,000. And I would request a motion this evening to accept that, uh, payment for that program.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, accept the donation of $15,000 from Four Elements to the high school.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Isn't that a blessing? Like $15,000 from goodwill and then $15,000 from Bobby to start our program?
Amazing. Thirty, thirty though.
Thirty total. Yeah. Okay. Um, onto action items, acceptance of the Title III final grant allocations for 2526. Ms. Erin Capel.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, I, I can, uh, handle this. And if you have any questions, Ms. Capel is here. Uh, so annually we, we receive funds from our title programs. Tonight we would ask for acceptance of our Title III, uh, final grant allocations for the, uh, school year 2526. The amount is, uh, in the amount of $7,740.85. So the recommendation this evening, this, these are funds, uh, that support our English language learner students that we receive annually from the federal government. Uh, I would make the recommendation this evening to accept the funds in the amount of $7,740.85 to the Title III grant funds for the 2526 school year.
I move that we approve $7,740.85 to the Title III grant funds for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. And now we are moving on. Discussion items, policy manual updates.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and break out the first one because that is the one that, uh, has garnered the most conversation. It's our, uh, policy on, uh, student organizations or a regulation. Uh, if you open IGDA dash R2, uh, this is titled student organizations. Student organizations, whether curricular or non-curriculum based that wish to organize under policy IGDA, must submit the application for forming the student organization to the building principal prior to soliciting interest from the student body. The submitted application should have the following things, uh, included in it. Uh, name of the organization, a general statement of the purpose of the organization and whether your organization is curricular or non-curricular. Parental permission form completed and signed for initiating the organization. Name of the faculty sponsor or supervisor for curriculum related organizations. And for non-curriculum related organizations, the name of the professional staff member who will be attending the meeting in a non-participatory capacity. Next is proposed constitution or bylaws. F is a description of the qualifications for membership. G, if applying as a curriculum related organization, a statement of the relation of the organization to the regular school curriculum is required. H, a list of proposed officers. I, a list of 10 students who wish to serve as members of the club. J, proof of written parental permission to form and/or join such student organization. And then K, a tentative meeting schedule, including dates and locations of the meeting. A lot of these things were required in the past at different, uh, different levels of, of responsibility at different schools. Uh, it was, it was a less formal process. I'm hoping to formalize this process and really allow us to, uh, go into the initiation of clubs with our eyes wide open in terms of, um, all that's involved in a particular club application before, uh, we allow students to make a decision on whether or not they enter a club. And then bullet two there is just, um, once a club has been approved, there is a process for renewal. And it, it has, uh, less bullets, but, uh, still the bullets that we need in order to allow for that club to, to, uh, renew. Below what it says, uh, is, uh, if the, the third bullet there is if we do not, uh, i- if you do not let the principal know that you'd like to continue the organization, then the, the club would be dissolved. Uh, the application process, I'm not going to read this in full, but basically the principal is the, is the first person to approve or consider the application. Uh, there is an appeal process. If, if the, uh, student is not happy with the principal's decision, then there's an appeal to the superintendent and that, that, that appeal to the superintendent is final. I can stop right there for any questions that, uh, the board may have on this regulation IGDA dash R2.
I have a question. Okay. So are we saying, so this is saying that the principal is going to be the ultimate decision maker then?
That, not the ultimate decision maker because there is an appeal process. So the principal will have, yeah, so the principal can make a decision, uh, to approve or deny. Um, and then the, um, if, if it's appealed, it would be appealed to the superintendent.
So if the principal is making the decision, do we have any guidelines of what that decision should be based on? I was just thinking.
Um.
I think we need to come up with some
You, you mean, I got you.
Wouldn't be acceptable?
So we can work with our principal. I don't know that that would be, we can try to put it in the regulation, but it would probably mean more of, uh, these are judgment calls that we make every day in terms of, you know, what's appropriate and what's not appropriate on particular levels. We can try to codify it in the regulation, but it might get, it might get pretty involved. You know what I'm saying?
Madam Chair?
Yes. Hi David.
Um, Dr. Boyd, do you think it, what about if you said, ask the, uh, principals what was just mentioned? Um, how, how do they feel about having some sort of guidelines or do they want it to be totally subjective? I mean, how
Uh, Ms., Dr. Burns is here. He's coming towards the thesis.
Well, I would think the, the clubs that probably would be the most challenging to approve would be your non-curricular clubs that don't have bylaws. Those would probably be the ones that we would probably scrutinize the most, uh, in terms of accepting. A lot of our clubs currently are, that are curriculum based, may not have bylaws, but they're curriculum based, which makes it easier to approve them. So I think any organization that comes forward with, uh, that's non-curricular, that doesn't have any substance behind it in terms of, um, you know, whether they have bylaws, whatnot, would be a little bit challenging in terms of what I'm thinking of in terms of approval.
Do you think it would be beneficial for us to create, um, some guardrails in terms of?
Well, I'm saying that that, you know, in terms of the questions that you currently have, there, there are, that, that would be a guardrail. Because when you're reading that and, and someone comes forward with a club and they don't have any substance behind it in terms of bylaws, constitution, expectations, well, what are you, what are you meeting about? What, what, what's your, I mean, that's the basis of your purpose. So I think having guidelines would be very helpful, but in thinking about what you currently have, if I have an organization that comes forward and they don't articulate that, then I wouldn't be approving that particular club.
What if they did articulate all that, but it wasn't something that might be appropriate for that age group?
I, I would say that that would be another reason to not approve a particular club if it's not appropriate in terms of age group.
Okay.
So yes.
And the question is, is are we, you know, are we comfortable with the, the discretion, that discretion being, you know, at the building level? Or if you, do you want to codify it in, in, in code? Or in, in a policy or regulation? And then how, how detailed do you want that to be? Because right now we're talking about a specific, you know, we're, we're, so, you know, what, what could be next that, um, you know, I, I think at some level we are going to have to rely on our principals to make some judgment calls with, with certain clubs that may come forward.
Yeah. And I'm not even looking at this as far as not trusting the principals. I just feel like it would help them make a decision to protect them.
Yeah, no, I don't think that either.
Madam Chair, let's just be sure that we're careful not to make a policy based primarily on one situation too. I think it's already been stated, but it's, it's, um, it's important that whatever policy we make should be, uh, able to be relevant for whatever the situation might be, including the current one we're talking about.
Madam Chair, I do believe that age appropriateness is important and that would be probably number one concern of all of them. When I think about, um, I mean, I, I don't even want to mention another club because I don't want to give any ideas, but there could be some other clubs that came before us that not, not necessarily is it not age appropriate, but it's not appropriate for school, right? Um, so I'm, I'm just concerned about that being a decision that the principal is making. I mean, they could, for example, if there was a gun club, well, maybe the principal likes guns. So we'll prove that. But is that appropriate for school? Does that make sense? I'm concerned about that.
So this sentence here is, is the one that we either want to leave general or, or flesh out with specific examples. So, so the, it's, it's bullet four. It says, the principal shall review the application and such other information is he or she considers appropriate and shall approve or disprove the, the recognition of the organization within 10 school days after receipt of the application. So we're beginning with giving the principal, the, the, the opportunity to make that judgment call. If we want to add something there, you know, where it says the building, the, the building principal shall review the application and such other information such as age appropriateness or, or whatever else. I mean, we could include that there. It's just, it could be a very exhaustive list, I think. Yeah.
Well, that, that's my point is that it doesn't make, you know, it's like when you begin to try to, to, um, I don't know, to dictate or to start to write some, even the age appropriateness, it's, um, we have to trust our principals because at some point they're going to have to make a decision. We can't write everything down. Um, I, I agree that the age appropriateness is very important, but, um, hopefully they wouldn't be a principal working for King George if, um, we didn't trust them to make those kinds of decisions. Um, and I just, I'm a little bit lary to try to put criteria down, um, which we'll never put enough criteria. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I do think it makes sense. I'm just really stuck on this age appropriateness. I think that's really important because we have three different schools. We have our elementary, well, I guess we're not talking about elementary.
No, I'm talking about
But you have your middle school who has 10 year olds in it. And you have your high school that has, you know, more older kids in it. So I'm just concerned when we think about age appropriateness, that we think about those smaller kids too, and what is appropriate for them and what is not. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think that you're concerned that we're, what if the principal and the school board is not on the same page as far as what is appropriateness? And there's a, like
And the parents too.
I think that's a good curve is getting parental permission, but there's parents that would be all about things that we don't feel are as age appropriate.
Yes.
And schools.
Or the government feels like the, you know, going to watch a movie at, you know, you have to be 13 to watch this movie. So it's not just
There's guidelines.
So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm thinking, speaking from the hip here, you know, um, you know, how we usually provide information to the school board, um, as an attachment, religious exemptions, things of that nature. We could do that for approved clubs and put a clause in this regulation saying, you know, providing an opportunity for the school board to, um, make a, you know, to, to weigh in or make an ultimate decision or something of that nature is, is a possibility.
I'm, yeah, I want to protect our principals from what just happened and also like the chaos that happened to them, you know, and then also our students and our community. Prevent that from happening again. I'm not sure if David isn't aware of what went on, but that's what we're trying to prevent again.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I'm, I'm very, I got, in fact, I was the first one that contacted.
Madam Chair, I've been, you know, hours and hours of research on this stuff. And the one thing that was at every level that I did and almost on every paper was that it's a school board superintendent are the ones that have to approve these things. Uh, and I don't want to micromanage, believe me, there's no way I want to micromanage principals out there, but the responsibility falls ultimately on the school board, uh, and the superintendent. So if Dr. Boyd wants to put something in there that says, uh, you know, school board approval, I think that's fine. And that may be a way, uh, that may be the way we should go.
So maybe, maybe a simple fix, if we're looking at this right now, if you take a look at bullet six, it currently says the principal may revoke recognition of any student organization at any time upon his or her own initiative or on the complaint by any student or staff member for good cause, including any violation to policy IGDA. Revocation may be appealed to the superintendent or his or her designee in the same method and under the same time limits as provided above. Maybe we just update that to the superintendent. Uh, and then, I don't know if you guys would like to be, I mean, the second part of that is the revocation may be appealed to the, and if it was appealed from me, it would be to you. So that, that's an option to update it that way. If you think it would be better. I mean, it still gives our principal on the front end, the opportunity to make a, a decision. Uh, and then ultimately we could make you guys aware of what clubs and organizations, you know, through our, through, through board docs. Uh, and then it gives you an avenue at the end to, revoke with good cause, uh, any, any, you know, represent in any student organization that we see fit.
Madam Chair, I'm asking, Mr. Frank, were you thinking that? Madam Chair, I'm asking Mr. Frank, were you thinking that you, based on your research, would like to see us approve or disapprove any um, new student uh, club that uh, is being, is applying for a position? Is that what you're kind of recommending?
That's not that that we could do that. That's not exactly what I'm recommending. I mean, I think it would be best if it went to the superintendent level because they would have, if it got appealed, would have to come to the board.
Okay, good, good. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad to clarify, you clarify. Let's agree with that.
Oh, Mr. Burns.
Just as a note, the 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 high school has a master list of clubs that that, you know, have the purposes, the sponsors, everything stated. I mean, we certainly can share that that list with the superintendent and others for informational purposes so that you have the names of the clubs that are currently in existence at the high school. We have that and we can make that available to you sooner than later.
Yeah, I, it it's not a control thing that we're trying to do. It's the fact that when like this whole thing went out, guess who got all the emails or a lot of the emails and how dare you let this in our schools and what are you doing? And we didn't even know about it. Like, we had no way to react to it because we weren't even aware of it. We were all learning same thing together.
Well, I think, you know, as a school board, you should know what clubs are existent in each of your schools.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily, I don't think we need to necessarily approve every club that comes through, but maybe be aware of what clubs we have.
Absolutely, and we can provide that.
So I I think that's what we do. I I think as we talk through this, and I think it's a good conversation. We provide for you as we do with other information you request, uh, just like this evening with the attachment for the religious exemptions. And we update bullet six here that says, "The superintendent may revoke uh, recognition of any student organization at any time upon his or her own initiative or on the complaint by any student, staff member." I I would just take out that, I would, I would take out. I would, I I wouldn't personify that at all. I would, I would say student organization at any time upon his or her own initiative or on the or on any complaint for good cause, including a violation of policy IGDA. And then revocation may be appealed to the school board in the same method and under the same time limits as provided above. I think that that provides that extra layer of of safety to our schools. And it gives you guys a a an opportunity on the front end to know what clubs and organizations we have. And then really for somebody that's trying to start a club, they have multiple opportunities to be heard. They get heard at the building level. If they don't like that decision, they can appeal it to to me. If they don't like that decision, they can appeal it to you, much like we do many other activities.
Dr. Burns, do you, do you feel like it's appropriate as a principal to to be the person that's going to say yea or nay?
Yeah, I mean, that's why we get paid the big bucks.
Okay, so you feel comfortable about it and?
Absolutely. I mean, we have to weigh the, you know, the politics, the 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 ins and outs and yeah, absolutely.
Because what I, the reason why I ask that is because if if you say a decision and then we're like, oh, we don't like your decision. It, we have, we have that um, conflict now. So I just want to make sure that that's okay with principals.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, so yes, I mean, you you know, that's what you pay us to do to make those decisions. And sometimes we may make good decisions and sometimes we may make the wrong decision. And you certainly can tell us if that's the wrong decision and we won't take it personally.
And that's why we get paid the big bucks.
Check in the mail, Mr. Bush.
For yourself, Mr. Bush. I I didn't like how it went down mostly because I love our principals and I respect all of our principals and I and I hate when a community who is not aware of everything just goes straight into attack mode. I appreciate that they're aware, but I wish they would send those emails, those positive emails of all the good that these principals allow in our schools and do and protect. And and so um, that's mostly a lot of my questioning is just to, I appreciate you coming up and and like basically saying it's okay that you know the clubs that are in the schools because that's our job. There's a lot of pushback with that, believe it or not. So, thank you.
Do we want to approve this tonight or do you want to come back with that was changes? Or?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think I'd like to see Dr. Boyd maybe change um, item six as you had discussed and then bring that back to us next time.
I I can certainly do that. It's just going to slow down some club stuff at the school level, but I think that's okay right now. I, let's get this thing ironed out. Are you guys, principals, are you guys good with that? Yes, okay. So yes, I I'd like to make sure that we make this uh, solid and then we'll bring it back to you next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the uh, good conversation.
Yes, thank you. All right, and now we are, oh, we're still going on.
Uh, so we're we're moving down now to um, J E C dash R two. Uh, this is just a uh, regulation that we need to strike out of our policy manual. This was a regulation that was included with our school admission policy that uh, came about through COVID. And if you see the last line there of that policy that says, "The emergency regulation will be revisited when the state of emergency associated with COVID-19 pandemic is declared ended." Well, we have ended. It is, it is officially ended. So we we need a motion to strike this regulation from the policy manual.
Want to do them all at one time or?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do them all at one time. I'll just keep going. Uh, we did remove tonight uh, J H C D B and J H C D B dash F, so I'm going to skip those. The next three up are um, or excuse me, four, uh, because we have a policy and we have uh, or excuse me, we have a regulation and we have three forms. So the regulation is on fundraising and soliciting. And then the three forms that we have and will continue to use in the school division we we use now, we would just like stricken from the policy manual. So I would like uh, J L dash F A, J L F dash B and J L F dash C stricken from the policy manual. So I think that concludes uh, all the changes for this evening and I'll I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, a move that we delete policies J E C dash R point two, J L dash F A, J L dash F B and J L F C as presented.
And update J L dash R.
And update J L dash R.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. And now.
You second that? Who second that?
Okay, committee reports. Mister, Mister Bush.
Um, Dr. Boyd and I visited um, ATI a week and a half ago. And um, it was, the report was excellent. It was the beginning of the new year. And um, they uh, the scores were excellent at the end of last year and the beginning of this new year, everything is looking so positive. So um, it was going to be my last board meeting with them, but um, I've just been so impressed and so has everybody else that's been involved with this whole project at ATI of how well Dr. Towery has done in taking this off the ground. And I think that um, I think the students that will be attending this ATI in the future, of course, will be two more years of eighth graders coming into ninth and eventually a full school will be there. Um, I think it's going to um, um, uh, bring a kind of statewide recognition about um, how valuable it is to have things like this. And the value of the King George Elementary was part of this pilot program. So um, I'm very proud that we chose to be part of this and that became evident at the last meeting. Um, and that's all I have. There's a CAC meeting, I believe, uh, first week in November, but um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. This is Cleveland.
Yes, um, I do not have anything to report. My meeting is later this month, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank.
Yes, I had two meetings last week. One was Title One, uh, very good meeting. Uh, Title One is the money that we get for kids that are struggling. Uh, and the principals uh, are using that money wisely. They're, they're uh, putting it into the math and uh, reading initiatives that are there. And then we talked about what are the the things that would help most? And uh, everybody concluded that the thing that we could do that would help these students the most is get parental involvement. So um, you know, we did, we just need to find ways to get parental involvement. We have a, we got some parents here tonight, but most of it was politically, uh, rather than, you know, it's politics rather than than, you know, education and we need to try to separate that as much as we can. Uh, but Title One is doing extremely well. They're, they're doing good things that we explained like, you know, you've got the cupcake, you've got the icing on the cupcake and then Title One is coming with the sprinkles that are on top. The the little bit of money that's there to help out uh, on the, on the, for the kids that that really need it. But, you know, getting parental involvement, uh, if we can figure out a way to do that, uh, would help immensely. Uh, the other meeting I had was a uh, Health and Safety Advisory Committee, uh, always, always good. Uh, one of the key things that uh, elementary teachers, you may not like this at all, but one of the key things that was there was uh, Mr. Davis talking about uh, candy given out to kids for rewards and doing the Skittles, giving out the thing, giving out the kids for for uh, rewards. Uh, you know, you stand in line or you do good on math or, you know, different, different counting of, you know, the different colors of the Skittles. Uh, it's probably not a good idea. Not only that, but you know, they're masking a lot of the hard drugs. They used to have to look like Skittles. So that's uh, that's an issue there also. Uh, we talked about uh, the new flag conditions that are coming out for the state, I think, put those out. Flag conditions being green, yellow and red and uh, getting flags to fly at the the two fields uh, so that coaches will know exactly what's out there. Uh, we also talked about the CPR classes that are coming up and the the number of people that we need to be certified as CPR. Uh, and I again brought up the, the, you know, NarCam, you know, how many kids do we have? I mean, I know we have students in the high school that are trained with NarCam. Uh, you know, and but, you know, I would, as I mentioned last year, I like to see a Nar, you know, every teacher have a NarCam kit in their desk in case a student uh, happens to to overdose in their class. And uh, you know, years ago, Mr. Perry had one overdose in his class. It's not pretty, you know, so whenever we can uh, we can, you know, do to get those NarCam there, I think that would help out also. That, and that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Um, my meeting's coming up, so I don't have anything to report at this moment, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Uh, yes, really quickly, Madam Chair, I have a few bullets. We do have the Fall Festival this Saturday. So I look forward to you all that can attend, uh, jumping in the back of the truck and throwing out tons of candy. So kids, be ready. This is not for academic incentives. This is for Halloween, uh, or Fall Festival. So, secondly, we do have a um, a a board policy right now that says the the division must present a report to the public by November 1st of each odd number year on the extent to which the objectives of the division comprehensive plan have been met during the previous two school years. Uh, so we, we intend to have for you at our next meeting, October 20th, an update on our strategic plan. Uh, and as you all know, we typically do this around the first of the year. Uh, but we want to give you guys in in order to stay on the right side of this policy, an update on where we are. And then, you know, it's just two slides for each of the four um, for each of the four uh, goals that we have in our strategic plan. So we'll give you a where, you know, what we've accomplished and where we intend to go moving forward. So that'll be good uh, as we shape policy and practice moving forward. And then finally, uh, since we last met, the county has released their capital improvement plan and budget calendars. So that's a big factor for us as we uh, go into play with uh, the budget season. The first thing that we'll do and really the first thing we'll accomplish is the capital improvement plan uh, process and and we'll, we'll have a kickoff meeting at the school board office tomorrow for that. But you guys be ready for our November meeting to approve the capital improvement plan that we have coming out of the school division before I deliver it to the county. Okay? And that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to board comments, Mr. Bush.
First of all, thank you for being patient with me. Um, as was mentioned, I am home ill and I'm um, I I have the flu, the A1, and so I definitely didn't want to be contagious with anyone else there. Um, still coughing a lot, but I'm, should be fine by the end of the week and not contagious. Um, I did ask if I could attend this board meeting tonight, but the doctor said absolutely not, not if you want to give the fluid to everybody around you. So I said, no, I don't think they'd appreciate that. Um, I appreciate that. Um, congratulations to uh, Marcus on the National Merit Scholar finalist. That's uh, being a principal for many years, a highlight of how many National Merit scholarships uh, finalists that I have. And it's always a huge uh, positive uh, remark about what's going in school when you have a National Merit Scholarship finalists. Thanks to Ms. Half for all of the work that she's doing. It's so clear in her report and appreciate very much everything that she's done and continues to do. And then I agree with what everybody said about Mrs. Duff. My goodness. We're so fortunate to can have somebody who can interpret all of the data that comes at us because it can be so much and looks so complicated that it's very hard. And Ms. Duff, you make it so precise and clear and easy for us to understand. And thank you. We are very blessed to have you. Um, and students that um, are here today, appreciate both of them very much and the way that they uh, and others that come, the way that they run their school and what's going on. And um, you know, thank you for my, my board members, um, for only three of you being there. You had a lot to do tonight and I appreciate all three of you. That's all.
Mr. Frank.
Yes, as always, I want to thank all the staff and 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 teachers for all that you do. And I want to thank uh, Matt Storn Kill Gore for her um, invocation tonight. Uh, and I understand she's leading some mentor groups, which I am definitely interested in. So I'll get with, I'll get you to get with her uh, and we can, we can talk about those. As I, as I said earlier, you know, I I the Title One, uh, when I had that meeting where we were talking about what's the best, you know, the the what we just needed most in getting these kids over the line as far as math, as far as as reading goes, and that's parental involvement. And uh, and I was thinking then, you know, all the people we had speaking last week uh, or last meeting at the board and we had a few here tonight speaking, we could just gear that into, you know, education rather than politics. It would be so great uh, there. I had the opportunity to, the pleasure really, of visiting one of my former students who's a teacher now at Steelston, uh, fifth grade teacher, Mr. Redmond at Steelmon, at Steelston. And she wanted me to come in and watch her do the the uh, trebuchet experiment. Uh, and it was, it was really, really great, you know, they threw tomatoes and cabbage and, you know, uh, golf balls and tennis balls and see how far they went and then measured the the positive and the negative distances that was there. And uh, it was, it was really exciting. Uh, and you know, you were looking at, I was looking at fifth graders uh, that are there and, I mean, they're, they're tiny kids still. And, you know, Nick, I was just thinking, you know, next year they'll be in middle school and, you know, there's, there's got to be a lot of things that we can do there because they're still babies. Uh, and, you know, they don't, they don't need to face some of the things that 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 we're talking about right now. But again, thank you for all you do. I I really appreciate it. Thank you.
This is Cleveland.
Thank you. Thank you to all the speakers and the present, presenters tonight. And thank you uh, for the staff and principals and the staff for everything that you do for our students and for this community. Um, one thing that I wanted to just bring up with the board is I've, we received an email collectively, but also I've been fun, been funneling um, a bunch of concerns from uh, parents for the challenge of the new math curriculum that was presented. This is particularly in the sixth grade is the, is who we've been hearing from. Um, we have been seeing that students um, are struggling with the new curriculum and that their grades are struggling. and that their grades are struggling because of that. Lots of challenges with keeping up the motivation because they're not, I guess, being able to perform on the tests as well as what they were expected to do based on the classwork. And I bring this up because I, I think that with the number of complaints that I've been receiving that we should look into how those students are performing and what can be done possibly for the transition for the new curriculum. I'm not saying that it shouldn't be the new curriculum because we know that the math scores need to improve, not just in King George, but across the United States. So I'm definitely for the new curriculum and for the more intense, I guess, math problems that are being presented. However, I, I don't want our children to lose motivation and those bad grades that are coming in are, they're really struggling with. So I'm, I know that Dr. Boyd has been looking into it. My ask would be that we try to do something to help the teachers with that transition so the students don't suffer because it's only the first quarter.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleveland, for always fighting for those kids in those grades. Yeah, I want to thank Ms. Whitney Kilgore. She's a, a new friend of mine that I've met in the county, but she does big things for anywhere she's at. And, um, she does the club at the high school and I can tell you that it went from a classroom, out grew the classroom to the library, out grew the library. Now they're in the lunchroom, which is full now. And, and it's not just what the club's about, it's her and her leadership skills that she has and that, and that she develops these relationships with these students. And, um, she just makes important and deep, long-term changes in their life. So I want to give her a shout out and I'm thankful, thankful that she was willing to come here tonight and, um, do the invocation. The safety patrol, I literally have Paw Patrol on my head right now because I'm looking at it. But safety patrol, that was, I always love seeing kids. I think we all love that. That's like the best part of the school board meetings is when the students come to the meetings and, and do their presentations. Marcus, is it Marcus Andrews? Andrews? Okay. I mean, what an amazing thing to do, 50,000 students apply for this and you made it. I mean, that's amazing. That's so awesome. Thank you for all that came out to speak, just like the rest of the board said. It's encouraging. I do enjoy both whoever comes out and, and speaks. We would like to see you more, more involved if you can. I understand people are involved doing other things in life and busy to fight in other battles and paying attention in other areas, but it's nice to see people more than just when it's a bad thing in their mind. Hillary and Mrs. Duff, thank you for your presentation and the time you took to do those and bring it before the board and update us. That's greatly appreciated. Always looking out for us. And then I think that's what I got. Yeah. Is there anything else? Oh, I do want to, like, I am very thankful for the board that I'm on, my team. I think that we, we, it must be like, I couldn't imagine not being on the board with you guys because you just, it seems smooth. We don't always agree, right? Or we're different, or I think we come together as like-mindedness. And, and I can honestly say that the students do come first in our heart and mind when we're on the board. And so I'm, I'm very thankful for that, that we're not always fighting and not getting along, that we see things how we're supposed to see and what we're here for. So thank you, guys. And our student reps, thank you for coming and being so brave. I know that was your first time and it was nerve, nerve wracking, but thank you. That's huge that you showed up and did that. So thank you. And you too, Ms. Brooke. Thank you. And then can I get a motion to move into close meeting?
Pursuit to State Code, Section 2.2-3712A of the Code of Virginia. I move that the board convene in closed meeting to review hires and substitutes as permitted under 2.2-3711A, Number 1 of the Code of Virginia.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chair, this is the motion carries. Thank you, Davis. Okay.
Okay.